It is now six thirty, May thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. We're in John Alalvin Ojos. Let me call this meeting to order. Mr. Dicky Gonzalez.
Present.
Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramírez.
Present.
Ms. Judy Solis.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sainz.
Present.
And Mr. Ruben Klein.
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia, are present. We do have a quorum, the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Gonzalez?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have section three approval of minutes of the public hearing on April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. The regular board meeting, April fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, and the special board meeting, April twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve them.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantú. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motions carry. Public forum. Item one is a travel request by Gruya High School and Rio High School. Do we have any discussion on item one? Do we have a motion on item one? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Benito Sainz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two, consider and take possible action on approval of donations to Rio Grande City C I S D.
Testing one two. Mr. Garcia, Board President, members of the Board, Mr. Trigo, Superintendent of Schools, colleagues, and ladies and gentlemen. Item two deals with the donations at the end of the school year with, to the different campuses. We have a big list here. Do you want me to go through each one, or what would you all like for me to do?
No, I think we do have the list ourselves. I think there is a correction Mr. Sainz had.
There is two. Matter of fact, yes, there is, I believe, on Therapy Works Speech Therapy. There was an error there. Instead of one twenty, it's two fifty. And then on the Walmart one to Roque Guerra, we have four checks of two hundred and fifty dollars, which is equal to a thousand dollars. The amount is correct, but the amount checked is four instead of one. And we also have one for Veterans Middle School that was on four twenty-nine, and it was an add-on. It's not in the list. And that was donated by Ms. Sonia Peña for a thousand dollars, and that was cash.
I guess Mr. Ramírez pointed out to me, Mr. Reser, it would be appropriate if you could recognize each individual. I know that sometimes at these, the situation, it's hard to give donations with a financial situation that everybody's in, and it'd be good if we could recognize these individuals.
We can do that, surely. Yes, sir. I'll start at the very top with the early college high school. They have a five hundred dollar donation. It's anonymous. Then we go with Roque Guerra. They have most of the donations here, a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Starr County. We have another one for Roque Guerra for a hundred and fifty dollars on the sixteenth, R and R Collision Center. Roque Guerra, two hundred and fifty dollars on the sixteenth, V and L Seledon Therapy. Another hundred dollars for Roque Guerra on the sixteenth, Smile and Shine P L L C. Another hundred for Roque Guerra on the sixteenth, Aptus Healthcare P L L C. Another hundred for Roque Guerra on the sixteenth, the Pediatric Care Center. A two hundred and fifty dollar donation on the sixteen, also for Roque Guerra. TransStar EMS L L C. A two hundred and fifty dollar on the sixteenth for Roque Guerra again, Therapy Works Speech Therapy Services. A five hundred dollar donation on the sixteenth, also for Roque Guerra, Family Medical and Specialty Clinic L L P. A two thousand dollar donation on the sixteenth for Roque Guerra. The Pediatric Practice Association. A one thousand dollar donation on the sixteenth. This is the one we discussed on Walmart. A one hundred dollar donation on the ninth from Starr Auto Glass. A three hundred dollar donation from Circle and Express L L C. A one hundred dollar donation on the ninth from Rivera's Towin. A two hundred dollar donation on the ninth from Chachi's Bales Bond. A one hundred dollar donation on the ninth from R and R Collision Center. A one hundred dollar donation from Dr. Norberto Cantú. A one hundred dollar donation on the thirteenth from Mr. Daniel J. Garcia. A one hundred dollar donation on the thirteenth from Eduardo R. Ramírez. And the last one here is the one that was not in there, Veterans Middle School, a one thousand dollars from Sonia Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Reser. Do we have a motion on item two?
Oh, you have a question?
Just real quick, can I ask, like, when these donations are made, are they used right away, or do they have to wait till the board approves them before they can use them?
The process on that, if I'm not mistaken, they are.
Ms. Joelas, we can go ahead and call Ms. Joelas.
And basically, no. By the time, when we get the donations, the campus, the ones that let us know, basically that they've got the donation, they just pass it into their account as soon as we get the next, we have the next board meeting approved. But if for some reason the board does not approve it, then obviously we have to give back the.
Believe me, when the campus gets a donation, they want it, they want to use it right away, because it's needed. That's the only reason we're asking for donations.
Yeah, and we have never had an incentive that we have to return, but yes, they do put it into effect as soon as they receive it.
Very good, thank you. Any more discussion? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on license agreement between Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, Law Enforcement Division, and Rio Grande City C I S D.
The Texas Park and Wildlife Department, Law Enforcement Division contacted the district for permission to gain access to the boat ramps and roadways to ensure the Texas Park and Wildlife Department is able to efficiently patrol the area and the vicinity there in the fort.
Discussion? What's that?
Are they going to be able to correct the agreement on page sixty-eight?
Oh, page sixty-eight, that is correct, sir.
We received the request, but it did not come with the area where both can sign, the school and the, and the person and where the company that's requesting it. So I would like to add, and I will let them know, that we need a page where we both agree, and it has to be signed by both parties. So we will include that in the minutes.
But they would not be coming to the school, right? They're coming to the.
Boat ramp.
Yes, if you see that boat ramp that they just fixed for that area in the back, they will be using the back entrance, so they will not be going through the campus.
Do we have a motion on item three? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Sainz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on interlocal agreement between Texas Department of Public Safety and Rio Grande City C I S D.
The Texas Department of Public Safety has requested an interlo- interlocal agreement with the Rio Grande City C I S D for the DPS, its troopers, its rangers, its agents, and contractors to access the property for the purpose of utilizing the boat ramps again and the roadways located on the properties. And basically, it's to provide also safety, security for the immediate area.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion on item four? We have a, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on selecting Farm Insurance and G E F Financial Group as agents of record for supplemental insurance for the Rio Grande City C I S D.
The Board Insurance Committee met on April the thirtieth, sir, and recommended to select Mr. Peña insurance and a financial service agent with the David Peña and G F F Financial Group as agents of record for the supplemental insurance product for the Rio Grande City C I S D.
Mr. President, before, I guess we are wrong this item. I think it needs to be changed to reflect that it's not Farms Insurance, it's David Lee Peña Insurance, and it's for supplemental insurances, plural.
Okay.
Let me ask you a question. Does the school district pay a part of this insurance, or they pay it themselves?
The district does not, sir. As I understand, it's the employees for supplemental. It's the employees.
But they can choose anybody else. They don't need to choose this company, right? They can go with F Flag, they can go with the, anybody else, right?
I believe that when they, we choose, they will bring it to the table, and we select on the different companies. David Peña is here.
They say, like you, you don't want this insurance, you want to go with, say, F Flag, and then this is for cancer and those kind of insurance, right?
Right. We would go through David Peña.
They go with somebody else, not this company?
Well, this is voluntary.
Yes, employees have the option.
It's supplemental insurance. It's not the primary. So it's anyone who wants to go to the information meetings and sign up would be voluntary.
This would be effective once.
For the school year, sir? For this coming school year?
For the next school year.
Yes.
And is, this went through the insurance committee, I would imagine?
Yes, it did.
And I was waiting for the discussion part to discuss that. This is supplemental insurance, and it is voluntary. Basically, what they do is they'll go out and search for the best coverage at the most reasonable price presented, because it's been over eighteen years that we haven't had any requests for bids or anything of that nature when it comes to insurance. And we had, at the committee meeting, we had teachers, we had administrators, we had different people come to that committee meeting here for three different presentations, and we listened to their input, which was very well received. And as committee decided that these two individuals who joined forces to provide one great service to the school district was the best for the school.
They were the lowest, the highest insurance?
It did not go based on lowest. It was based on, what they do is they go out there and bring back to us prices, cover disclosures. Correct.
They're going to do the research. They're going to look for the carriers to find the best rates and benefits for the, for the school. We're not getting their insurance, you know, because they're going to, they're going to do the research and get the carriers with the best rates and benefits.
Then from there, it's up to the employee, whatever they want to.
Exactly.
Where they want to go with.
Exactly.
That is correct.
Right, so Mike, you said not to have supplemental.
It's voluntary, yes. Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item five?
I move that we approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second?
Along with the amendment of that name of the insurance.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on tax refund for the month of April two thousand and fifteen.
Present is a request for the approval of the tax refund for April, sir. Refund totaling a thousand nine hundred and sixty-three thirty-eight being requested.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion on item six? Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on requisitions five thousand and over in a twelve-month aggregate. Discussion? Questions?
This is page eight.
If there's any questions, I mean, they have the list.
Yes, go ahead. Directed to Joe Smedley, our purchasing agent.
Okay. I asked this question because I can understand on page eighty, eighty-one, excuse me. The description on the second item, goal service agreement, it just, it was very, it stood out to me where it says, we're thirty-six month contracts starting June first, two thousand and fifteen, for the new Rio Grande City High School elevators. The school's not even a year old, and we're getting contracts. Didn't, didn't it come with it? I mean, like, when it was built?
Okay, yeah. Well, the, the insurance or the warranties for one year, so this will start, this coming June first. Mr. Sainz, and thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Trigo. Yes, it is a thirty-six month contract starting in June, but I do state here that it's six thousand six hundred and sixty dollars per year.
Yes.
But yes, it does start after one year of warranty on the high school.
Is that pretty standard? I mean, I'm not familiar with this, so.
Yes, as far as I know, from construction, past constructions, warranties are usually one year.
One year of the, all warranties are for one year. There's some that are extended for more than one year, but basically, most of them are for one year, and then we start off.
Any more questions?
Mr. President, if I may, on page eighty of the requisitions, next to the last requisition, requisition two forty-nine, nine hundred and twenty-seven, there was some damage due to lightning strikes at Gruya, this is for Gruya High School, and they had to replace microprocessors. It's, you see the amount there, thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-four. We've already been in contact with our property and casualty insurance company, and a claim will be filed with them. They're aware of it, and the representatives from Schindler Elevator will come down and speak to them, and, or, either that, or over, over the phone, they'll explain the, the process. And, and it was an act of God, so insurance should be covering this.
Do we have a motion on item seven? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on awarding of the following bids, RFQ fifteen twenty-two External Auditor Service, RFP fifteen twenty-three Bank Depository, fifteen twenty-four Commercial Carpet, fifteen twenty-five Vinyl Tile, fifteen twenty-six Concrete, fifteen twenty-seven Plumbing Supplies, fifteen twenty-eight Electrical Supplies, fifteen twenty-nine Janitorial Supplies, fifteen thirty Construction Materials, and fifteen thirty-one Student Athletic and Voluntary Accident Insurance.
Okay, Mr. President, do you want me to go through these individually, or?
Okay.
Okay. Starting with RFQ fifteen dash twenty-two, and this is for External Audit, Auditor Services. After a meeting with the Contract Committee, I think it's been a couple of weeks ago, and presentations were made by these two accounting firms, and our recommendation, the Board Finance Committee, I'm sorry, recommendation is to enter into final, or financial negotiations with Arena, Arena and Gasa LLC as the External Auditor.
No, I think we made one motion.
Yes, that's who we have currently. Yes, sir.
Yeah, make a motion per.
Okay, all right, per.
Yes.
Do we have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. There was a handout given to you, the Board and Mr. Trigo, for the Bank Depository Request for Proposals fifteen dash twenty-three. And there is a, a list of evaluation criteria, criteria that was listed in the bid packet as we took them to the different banks. Mr. Reser and I, we, we hand-delivered the packets to each bank in, in our school district, and so, and it stated, if you see that first column, well, on the right side, evaluation criteria, there's the maximum rating that, that a bank could get. And, and we have our ratings for Lone Star Bank and also for BBVA Compas Bank. And recommendation from the school district is to award the Bank Depository to Lone Star National Bank. Now, this is for a biennium for two years, starting September first of two thousand and fifteen, ending on August thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. With, with a possible extension after that.
Any discussion?
That, that's a mighty big difference on the first item, from thirty percent from one bank to fourteen percent on the other.
Yes. It was determined on the cost of services, their, their bank fees that they offer, or I say the bank fees, the, the bank fees that they would charge the school district for, for different services.
Question I always have, particularly for banks, is do they offer scholarship money for these schools?
They could. I know in the past, it seemed like banks, and I'm, I'm talking fifteen, twenty years, twenty years ago, they were very, banks were very generous. I think it's gotten pretty.
If I remember correctly, I believe that Lone Star were generous with us during the scholarship, the superintendent's scholarship, which goes to our local students here in Rio Grande and La Gruya. I know that they've invested in our community, so I'm glad they're getting it.
All right. Do we have a motion on, on the Bank Depository?
I move that we approve the item as, as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
The next item is, yes, bid number fifteen twenty-four for Commercial Carpet, and we have our tally sheet on page eighty-five of your agenda. We received bids from two companies. And our, our recommendation is a company that offered the lower price, which is in bold.
Mr. President, if I may, because of this particular vendor's past relationship with the district, I think it's appropriate, and I motion that we award a bid to Metal, O Meadows Carpet Service.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen twenty-five Vinyl Tile.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, on, starting on page eighty-seven is our recommendation for Vinyl Tile. We, we received bids from three different companies. And again, we're recommending low bid, and low bids for this particular item is Lowe's of Mac Allen.
Do we have a motion on item fifteen twenty-five Vinyl Tile?
I move that we approve as presented.
Do we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen twenty-six Concrete.
Mr. President, members of the Board, we did receive one bid this time, and just a little background for, well, especially for Mr. Sainz, since you're new to the Board. These, these bids are for a six-month period that we do for our Maintenance Department, and on this particular bid, we received one proposal or one bid, which is Lopez Ready Mix, and their price is sixty-five dollars per cubic yard, which has been pretty common price in the recent past.
And the question is, just, just to, the statement you just made, that means that in six months, we have to do it again, right?
Yes, sir.
Every six months?
Yes, sir. And, and the reason we do that, many years ago, we'd do it for one year's time, but a lot of vendors would say, well, the prices of cost of materials change, you know, whether it's plumbing supplies, electrical supplies, concrete, and also, so we reduce it to six months. So we'll, we'll be bringing this to you every six months. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on item fifteen twenty-six Concrete? Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen twenty-seven Plumbing Supplies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We do have, on, starting on page ninety, we have a list of, what is that, seven companies that have submitted bids for items that we had listed. These are the most commonly purchased items that maintenance purchase, purchases, and our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis, based on low bid. And if I may, Mr. President, if there are some items on plumbing and electrical and the such, that there's a, an awarded company is not from Rio Grande City, and maintenance has a, or the district has an emergency, we're asking if, if the district can purchase from a local vendor, even if they're not the low bid, for emergency purposes only.
I would think so long as it was a reasonable amount of, in the difference, that makes sense, that they would have to travel to the valley and expend gasoline and time. We can buy local.
Right. Yeah, and sometimes it's on a Saturday or Sunday, and I know there's some local vendors, they'll even open up their doors to, for us to get a, parts, or for us to get parts. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
The, the lowest bidder, it seems like, is from West Lake Cove. Is there a delivery charge, or do they just deliver, or do we go for them first?
They will deliver. Sometimes we have maintenance that might happen to be in the valley. If they get a call, say, hey, run by here and pick up some items. But our, our bids are F O B Rio Grande City, so if we order something, they should ship it.
Do we have a motion on fifteen twenty-seven Plumbing Supplies?
I would move that we would award it on an item-by-item basis, and that also in the event that there's an emergency and they need to use a local vendor, that we approve that as well.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen twenty-eight Electrical Supplies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And along the same lines, these are items, commonly purchased items by the Maintenance Department, and we have several vendors, and our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis, based on low bidder, and also have the caveat that there is an emergency that we can purchase from a local vendor. And whenever there's emergencies, I believe the superintendent's made aware of, of that.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen twenty-nine Janitorial Supplies.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a list of items on page, starting on page ninety-six of janitorial supplies, again, again, commonly purchased items, and our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis, based on low bid.
Do we have a motion on item fifteen twenty-nine Janitorial Supplies? Do we have a motion on item fifteen twenty-nine, janitorial supplies?
I move that we approve, as presented with the caveat that if it's something in an emergency, that it be local.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, item fifteen thirty, construction materials.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. And we have several items that we've asked for pricing from. And again, our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis. If you will notice, the very first vendor, we have a DQ, we disqualified this company, and we purchased quite a bit of paint material from them. But part of our bid package, we require bid forms to be signed, dated, filled out, signed and dated. And I think it was new personnel in their office, it wasn't done, but, you know, that's our, that's our rule. So, we disqualified it for these next six months.
Do we have a motion on fifteen thirty, construction materials?
I still move.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Science, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen thirty-one, student athletic and voluntary accident insurance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, excuse me, I'm sorry. I would like the Board, if they would please reconsider, we'd like to take this bid back and do some more evaluation and be able to take this to committee before we award it. The effective date is September first, so we do have some time.
Do we have a motion to?
If I may, just for discussion purposes, Mr. Semeli, I know that the dual agents of record that we have now are very familiar with this kind of coverage. So, I think it'd be good to utilize them. And Mr. Trigo, I think, if, you know, especially something of this kind of, this nature of premium, this has to go, this has to go to the insurance committee. I'm a little, you know, I'm a little, it's kind of weird that it hadn't or it didn't. But that being said, let's get more teachers in there, more administrators. I think it's good to get that kind of feedback like we had last time.
Sure.
Yes, and we're requesting for the future that anything that regards insurance does come to the insurance committee, and we've discussed that. So, we will make sure that that does happen in an orderly manner.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion?
A motion that it be tabled.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantu, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Semeli. Item nine, discuss and possible, discussion and possible action on approval of right of entry for survey and site assessment agreement with U.S. Customs and Border Protection, Department of Homeland Security for portion eighty, share sixteen dash eight property.
Yeah, this, this right of entry has been reviewed by legal. Basically, you're just giving them the, if it passes, giving them the approval to go, take the right of way, to see if it's, they're not going to install anything yet. They would have to come back for that, but just give them the right of way for them to look around and see if it's proper.
Any discussion?
Is it near the new schoolroom? Where's this portion eighty?
Check down that, Ms. Ruelas. The question, would you come up, please? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. On this item, I had not seen, it was addressed to Ms. Dion, and we had not gotten a copy of it, so this is the first time that I looked at it. So, I'm not familiar with it.
If you go to page one nineteen, there's a little map here that shows the location. They were trying to, something for Homeland Security.
Okay, we have a representative here from the Army Corps of Engineers that you can probably answer any of the questions that you might have.
Hello, my name's Jeff LaSoca. I'm from the Forward District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We're down in the valley area this week, getting right of entries from several landowners. But I came this evening to help answer any questions, if I could.
Okay, the question is, where is this exactly?
Okay. I do have a map here, it's right, right next to the boat ramp, I believe you were speaking about earlier. If you'd like to pass around and look at. It's in reference to, they're called Remote Video Surveillance System Program that CBP is implementing. And it's, it's just a, just like it was mentioned, just a right of entry for site assessment. CBP is, they're going to install seventy-two new camera towers all the way from the Gulf up to Falcon Reservoir. And this is a preliminary phase, phase that they're in right now, just to get the right of entry, to do the site assessments. And then, there's an alternate site for each of the seventy-two sites. And once they down-select, they look at all of them, then they'll make a further determination and come back, you know, we'll come back to the, to the, to the school to say, hey, we'd like to discuss and negotiate an easement to access that site and further camera tower site itself.
This is just for assessment purposes, just to go on the property assess it?
It's just like permission slip, yeah, that's all it is. It's just a one-page document that just states that I'd like to go in and a design team and an environmental group will look at the specific location where they've given the GPS coordinates for the tower and look at that coordinate, make sure there's no environmental concerns. And the period of time on the right of entry is, they're asking for twenty-four months. That gives time to look at all hundred and forty-four sites, down-select to the seventy-two sites. And that allows, if they do choose that site to further investigate, that gives time for them to get an appraiser in, gives time to survey the meets and bounds, the corners of the property, so they know, you know, exactly where they are. And that also gives time for them to do a bore sample of the soil to make sure that the soil can support the tower. The towers that they're going to install are self-supporting, they're monopole-type towers. They don't have any guy wires or anything with them, so they'll need to drill down far enough, far enough to support the height of the tower.
How tall, how tall would the tower be?
Typically, these are sixty to eighty feet tall, depending of, of course, on the terrain and elevation that they're located.
In the twenty-four month time period, that's customary?
In this case, yeah, usually, it can vary. I mean, we've had several landowners that have said, you know, can we adjust that twenty-four months? And, and, yeah, it's no problem to adjust that. And like I said, the only reason they asked for that time period is to do the assessments on all hundred and forty-four sites across the valley. And then, once they down-select to the seventy-two, they'd like to look at it a little closer. That gives time to do the other survey, the appraisal, the soil sample pieces, without coming back to the landowner to ask for permission for another right of entry. It, you know, it doesn't have to last for the twenty-four months, it could be less, just depends on, of course, the weather and all. Here now, it's been really wet, so it's slowed down everybody.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item nine? Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item ten, consider and take possible action on memorandum of...
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Superintendent. On item ten, we do have representation from the city so they can explain a little bit of what the program's about. We have our Chief Financial Officer and our Parks and Director. So, I'd like them to tell you a little bit about our swimming program that we're looking at to adopting. And then, if it's okay with you, we'll jump into the legal aspect of the MOU.
Yeah, anytime I hear the word swimming, and that makes me very nervous.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board, Mr. President, Superintendent. My name's Omar Perales, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Rio Grande City. We're trying to inaugurate our first Gus and Goldie program here. I know, we're going to have two summer sessions, starting from June eighth and ending on August twenty-first. We'll have five sessions. I know we'll have a morning class from nine to, nine to twelve. And our afternoon class starts from one to, one to five. I know the cost, hopefully we get enough kids to participate, would be twenty-five dollars for participation with that registration. It will include a T-shirt and a certificate at the end of the Gus and Goldie program. We're going to, our Gus and Goldie program is branched with the McAllen Parks and Recreation. We hope also, we're going to get certified lifeguards. I know that you've had some, you've had a current program like that. No, we intend to get...
Okay, you said we hope, I was like...
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. We intend to get certified lifeguards.
Not a hope, yeah, you caught me there.
I'm sorry.
Time out, time out. Your attorney's here.
Yes, ma'am. So, we're at, we'll train them two weeks or a week before we get going with the program. Each program, like I said, they'll have a certain group, and we're going to have a minimum of twenty-five kids per session. And the session runs two weeks.
And the city would train them, or Gus and Goldie, that program from McAllen Parks and Recs, will train them?
No, the Gus and Goldie, we'll get a certified director to come teach the program, the lifeguards. Yes, ma'am, to get them certified.
Right, and I'm assuming that the employees, there'll be background checks?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. They need to go by the city hall and pick up an application. And I know, again, I know you have a couple of them that have worked here before, send them over to the city so we can register them. And we'll do a background check on them.
And you'll provide proof of that and the certification?
Do we have an idea what the cost is going to be for this, for the school?
Oh, that's the finance.
As far as the cost, the MOU pretty much details what we would be willing to contribute to the program. This is a service that we're offering over the summer. As the MOU states here, we looked at different possibilities of looking at utility payments and things of that nature. However, because a lot of the municipalities, and I would imagine the school district is probably bundled into a municipality electric discount through Gexa or one of those companies, as well, that issues an incentive at the end of the year. Switching meters did not seem feasible to do at a time like this for a ten-week window. So, we decided in lieu of utility payments to offer a monthly rental for the program, since it's a small period of five hundred dollars a month. We also proposed that, since the city does not maintain a swim facility and we do not have the equipment or the chemicals to treat such a facility as the pool, that we propose that the school actually continues to maintain over the summer, the swim pool. Also, since I heard some concerns about liability, and that was our concern as well, we are working with TML, Texas Municipal League, our casualty insurance carrier, to cover all of the employees, all of the children during operating hours, during the operating hours of the summer swim program.
Employees and the children and the district?
Whoever's actually working and using the facilities between eight and five.
This was just handed to us today, so that's why we have a lot of questions. And we're just now reviewing it, and again, the word swimming, I mean, it sounds great. Gus and Goldie, very familiar with that, I just...
The pass out, the pass out on your booklet, this was presented to facilities meeting on May seventh. However, the pass outs that I gave you, you'll see one that's stapled, that's the, those are the recommendations from our legal. These are, you can see all the language that was added, it's in red.
That addresses all your liability concerns in the red.
Anything in red. And on the single sheet, you'll see Exhibit A. So, you'll see memorandum of agreement with Exhibit A. Those are rules that will be followed. And I apologize for the pass outs that came in from legal today.
If it happens to, I just want to say, if it happens to get approved, I would suggest with the corrections made by us on there.
Right, in other words, so we were presented to by legal.
Unstapled and stapled, so...
Oh, I think they're both, oh.
Yes, what, the unstapled sheets are the corrected version from the language in red. That's coming from our legal.
Red is get up and up. Well, they're both, I think they're about the same. One of them just shows where we made the changes, and the other one...
Yes, exactly.
Just shows how we accepted the changes.
Exactly.
Again, we're going to be having our school employees working there for the maintenance part. Is that correct?
Yes, maintaining the pool, yes, sir. And that would be on, the second portion of the MOU talks about what the district agrees to. And it talks about, I believe it's the fourth bullet, I'm sorry, the fifth bullet. And it talks about maintaining the pool. Just verified with the city, they are picking up the personnel cost for these lifeguards, which I think is very important. And just to reiterate this, anything in red is coming from our legal advice, recommendation.
And I take it that all of this information, for example, the certified lifeguards, and that they pass the background checks, would all be provided to us before the program initiates?
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion on item ten?
For the record, just stay as amended, because I know that the one that they originally gave us, we amended it a little bit, so. As amended by legal counsel.
As amended.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item, thank you. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on elementary mathematics training by Sharon Wells, Mathematics Curriculum Incorporated.
I just wanted to give a quick thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Mr. President, members of the Board, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen. This item was presented to the Board Curriculum Committee meeting. We had teachers from all nine elementary campuses, mathematics teachers and their principals, viewing the presentation by Sharon Wells. And they all agreed that they are in need of a math program that is structured to include the new TEACs with a scope and sequence to make sure their students are successful. The program is aligned, an aligned curriculum from grades second through fifth, and it will be providing training every six weeks. We are recommending the approval of the Sharon Wells program for the elementary mathematics grades second through fifth in the amount of thirty-three thousand, nine thirty-six. Funding source will be one ninety-nine and federal programs.
I have a question, and I think it was already answered, but I want to make sure. On the training, it says up to thirty-five teachers per session, per session? And my question was, is that enough to cover all the elementary schools?
It is, sir, it is. In fact, there are campuses that have departmentalization, so it's either one or two teachers per campus.
Ms. Garcia, and this program has had a lot of success, hasn't it, with elementary?
We've had it before, and teachers feel very comfortable, and we've had some success. We are facing new TEACs, so, you know, we're just going to implement this program with new TEACs. But La Jolla ISD has it, and they've, they've, we've checked with the curriculum department, and they have a test that they've had success.
Well, and so long as it was presented to the curriculum committee, and she stated that the teachers, they're the ones that selected it, they were given different options, they lived with it for a while.
They really wanted the program back.
Because when I heard Sharon Wells, I was like, whoops, since my mother was a teacher, they had Sharon Wells. But she says, it's a newer program, and it's what the teachers wanted, and so I feel very comfortable.
I was going to say, sorry. That, as you said, it's a very structured program. And it has its advantages because of that, because it's structured. And it's easier to follow and just follow the instructions. And that, the only thing it lacks, if it's highly structured, is the creative abilities to deviate a little bit from it. But it's, it's a very good program. I have to say that we've had it, and I know that Edinburgh ISD uses it as well, I believe, in the elementary schools, and it's, it's good.
Our past experience, the teachers do follow it, and they incorporate other resources within their classroom, you know, to make sure that everything is covered. And so, yes, it is a successful program.
And teachers are excited about that at this point. Those that represented every campus went back and talked to their grade-level team and the principal and other personnel, and they're excited about this program, based on the past experience and the success that we've had with it.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number twelve, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses agreement with STC for summer twenty fifteen. And thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, Mr. Trigo, members of the Board, community. Rio Grande City High School and La Guia High School as well are recommending their summer courses for the summer. This particular item did go through the board committee, the curriculum board committee as well. There is a change, however, on Rio Grande City High School speech. The speech class, it's not a change, we have one section of speech being offered, but we're also going to be offering one section of speech at La Guia High School. La Guia High School students, and talking to their counselors, decided, or they recommended, that they didn't want to have the art appreciation online. They would rather take the speech course like Rio Grande City High School.
Exactly.
So, our recommendation is that we allow them to take speech at Gruia High School as well.
Instead of art appreciation?
Instead of art appreciation. So, the cost would be more or less the same. So, the cost, instead of it being five thousand, five hundred and eighty-six, it would be six thousand, five hundred and seventy-two, and that would be the cost for the two sections of speech, instead of the art appreciation. The other, uh, program is our DMSA Academy, we only have three students enrolled in the academy, and in that particular academy, it's paid by the students. The district pays and the students reimburse for a total of six hundred dollars, so there's no cost to the district for that. We recommend approval for item number twelve. Any questions?
Discussion? We have a mo- motion and item twelve?
I move that we approve as, um, presented and amended to reflect that Gruia High School will be offering speech and not art appreciation.
Correct. Thank you.
We have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
We have a second by Mr. Sines, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Trino. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on summer ACE, elec- electrical cardiogram certification.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board President, respective members of the board, and the audience that's here. First of all, uh, the family engagement specialist, as it is written in the ACE grant, uh, cycle eight, year two, is that we want to engage the students, the community of La Gruia and their parents, not only the students, but their parents. So, we're requesting that through STC, we offer a certificate for the parents of La Gruia. We will, they will be selected because they have, their students have to be enrolled in the ACE program. So, there's gonna be eight parents that will be selected. Through STC, the instructor will come on a daily basis, but in ACE, we're gonna run six weeks instead of three weeks. And at the end of the course, the parents will have an EKG, for short, uh, certificate, and they will be able to practice in the medical career pathway. And the request is being, uh, kindly, kindly begged that you approve.
Any discussion?
No, I know that this was presented to our committee meeting, but I can't remember, do we absorb the cost, or does the-
The ACE grant.
The ACE grant absorbs the cost for this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I couldn't remember that, okay.
That's fine.
And, uh, the parents would have the certificate to use, job training would happen.
Correct.
And it's only offered in La Gruia and not Real Grandi?
The grant for cycle eight is only written for Gruia High School and for Gruia Middle School.
We have a motion and item thirteen?
I so move.
We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on summer ACE, CTE dual enrollment course-
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, the next item is, um, also funded through ACE. Uh, ACE believes very highly in supporting House Bill Five, where the students would get endorsements or certifications. And on speaking with our new principal at Gruia High School, Ms. Lupita Garza, uh, we have agreed, and, uh, with your permission, we're proposing of that ACE fund, um, the welding first class, welding class, for credit. Right now, we have our instructor from STC, um, he travels every day to Gruia High School, and the students get credit for college and also for their respective high school, which is Gruia High School, as well as Real Grandi City High School. But for the ACE grant with House Bill Five, we wanna continue the certifications and recruit for the welding one. Uh, so we're requesting that we, um, get permission to approve the CTE dual enrollment grant, so that the granting will come from the ACE grant for the students for this summer.
How long is the program?
The program is also gonna be six weeks.
And again, at no cost for the student?
No, ma'am, it's, uh, funded through the ACE grant.
Everything through the ACE grant.
Yes. And, I don't know, our instructor here, Balde, would, Lena, would like to say if you were?
He's put on the spot.
I don't know, tell the words. Uh, I'd just like to thank you guys for the opportunity to teach these kids. I mean, they show up to my class like, are we gonna, are we gonna read? No, we're gonna weld. All right. So, they get more motivated, so I thank you for the opportunity to do that for them.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I like that you called them your kids.
Yeah, and then they, they come, hey, sir, can I get a job already? It's like, look, you gotta graduate first.
I know welding, yeah.
Yeah, and then they'll get a certification, a completion of the course, and that'll give them credit towards, if they decide to go to any college that offers any welding program.
That's great. Encourage reading too, sir.
Are there certifications, do they need to pass any kind of, uh, state exam or something like that?
No, it's actual, all they need, all it is, is a completion, you have to at least be seventy-five percent of the time in class, and of course, pass the final exam, and you'll be able to get the certification for the, the course.
And we have articulation agreements with, uh, STC, or?
Yes, sir, everything's based off of the STC program.
We have a, a motion and item fourteen?
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Trino.
Thank you.
We have a second. We have a second by Mr. Sines, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on summer migrant substitute teacher certification.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Board President. The ACE summer program, it has an initiative to improve the quality of life for the Gruia parents, is requesting approval for a minimum of twelve adults or a maximum of fifteen to complete their substitute teacher certi- certification, to be placed in the substitute teacher list for the state of Texas. They will receive a certificate of completion and one point two credits towards attending STC in the education degree plan. But the requirement is that they have to have a high school, um-
Diploma?
Yes.
Okay, but again, they would be at no cost to the parent and, of the student that goes to Gruia, and no cost to the district, right?
Correct.
Through the ACE program.
Yes.
Do we have a motion and item fifteen?
I so move.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on summer ACE twenty fifteen TSI assessment preparation.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. Um, South Texas College will provide forty hours of Texas Success Initiative or the TSI assessment preparation for migrant students through Real Grandi City V C I S D. The, I'm gonna clarify, uh, one item. Uh, for Real Grandi City, for the TSI, for the students, that will be funded through the migrant program, through, it's a federal program through Mr. Joel Salinas. As the Assistant, um, Director for Federal Programs, I'm speaking on his behalf. For Gruia High School, ACE will be funding it. Uh, that we will be selecting twelve participants, high school students with a maximum of fifteen. There's gonna be professors coming down from STC, and they're gonna go ahead and, um, teach the assessment to the students, so they can, of course, pass and enroll in college, which will be in the areas of reading, writing, and math.
Just to comment on that, I'm, I'm the one in charge of that program at, at La Jolla High School.
Okay.
And it's a fantastic, I mean, thing that students have to go through before they can, uh, enroll in any college class. Um, but besides that, I took the math part, the test itself, it's very rigorous, it's pretty good, though, but the, it's something I would recommend, because there is a sample program there for teachers to take, because it helps them even prepare their, the students better, just as a recommendation, let the teachers do the sample.
We should all take it, I would-
I think I would. Math is not my forte.
They don't have to give us the results, just take it.
Okay.
I took the math, and of course, being a math major, that's not a problem.
You breathed it.
I won't say about the other ones, but that one-
Yes.
We'll take the reading one.
We won't disclose the results.
Me, Danny, I didn't wanna take the reading one.
The reading and the writing.
The reading or the writing?
Do we have a motion and i- item sixteen? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on summer migrant twenty fifteen assessment preparation.
Like I said, uh, Mr. Salinas will be funding the one for Gruia High School for, uh, I'm sorry, for Real Grandi City High School, for the migrants, and I will be funding the one for Gruia, because, uh, ACE is not written for Real Grandi City High School. And I represent Mr. Salinas. It's gonna be basically the same class, but one will be it for Real Grandi City High School, for the migrant students that Mr. Joel Salinas, federal programs will be funding, and I will be assisting him, uh, funding him through Gruia High School because of the ACE grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion and item seventeen?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Trino. Item eighteen, consider and take possible action on text, textbook adoptions for the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, uh, proclamation, uh, twenty fifteen requires the selection of new textbooks in the areas of social studies from K through twelve, and mathematics, uh, grades nine through twelve. The district textbook committee, which consists of, and is comprised of, um, teachers of the subject areas and different grade levels, uh, reviewed and selected the following adopt, for adoption. For elementary social studies, uh, K through five, Pearson Publishing. Middle and high school social studies, um, from grades six through twelve, McGraw-Hill Publishing, and high school mathematics, which is for high school, uh, was Pearson Publishing.
Any discussion?
No, I know that you presented during the committee meeting, and you said that the teachers were able, again, to look at different textbooks, live with them for a while, and they decided that's what they want.
Samples, samples are all delivered to the different, uh, campuses, and so, yes, the entire staff is able to, to look through it.
Sorry. And they are allowed to supplement, right? I mean, with additional stuff.
Yes, so they'll be-
And the only reason is because of the social studies part, you know how conservative state that we are, that, that removed some of the items that I feel are so important, uh, that should be covered?
Correct.
Mexican-American Studies being part of it, including, and also, uh, people like Cesar Chavez and, and Thurgood Marshall, which were removed. I hope that we can still supplement with materials.
This does not preclude any kind of supplemental, uh, materials.
I so move that, I move that we approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dono. Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on the education associates' job preparation skill system for special education, Gruia High School and Rio High School.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Garcia, Board President, Mr. Joel Trigo, Superintendent Schools, Board Members, and all that are present. Special Ed Department funds two teachers, one at Gruia High School, one at Rio High School. This is for the VAC class, which is the vocational adjustment class program. Uh, this, uh, program is a work program, and it's also a classroom-based program. We have been looking at curriculums and going to different conferences for two years, and at the present time, we are, uh, recommending this curriculum to be adopted. For both of the classes, the teachers do agree that this curriculum will be meeting the needs of all our students. The students that, uh, we are targeting are children with intellectual disabilities, which are ID students, and the learning disabled students, the LD students. The ultimate goal of the program is to be able to transition the students from a school setting into a real-world, um, experiences. And this program has thematic units that will go ahead and help us, we like the sequence that it has. It starts, for example, with work, um, with, um, applications. So, first, searching for a job, applications, resumes, uh, interviews, accepting the job, um, what the explore, what the, what, uh, the expectations will be at the job. It also gives them, um, how to handle money and how to work with money, and we feel that this curriculum will meet the needs. And it was approved by our teachers, we're seeking your approval now.
Yeah, very good.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion and I'm item nineteen? Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Item twenty, consider and take possible action on request for permission to use a design building procurement method, RFQ, for the district-wide energy conservation and facility improvement program.
The facility committee met on May the seventh, sir, and recommended, with, we request, uh, for permissions to use the design build procurement method, the RFQ, for the district-wide energy conservation and facility improvement program. The improvement program will identify areas of energy servicing for the district, make necessary improvements, and help with financing the project. The cost of the project will be paid out of the savings regenerated by the cost savings in the utilities that guaranteed by the program.
Do we have a discussion? Do we have a motion and item twenty?
I move.
Do we have a, a motion, do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Gonzalez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sir. Reports and information.
The advanced academic program was shared with the curriculum board committee meeting, and, um, we wanted to inform the board that we have a need to improve our programs at the high school. Um, a group of central administration, uh, took a visit to Edinburgh ISD, um, only because they have three inspiration schools that have been awarded the Inspiration Award, and, um, we went to visit two high schools, we brought back ideas and initiatives. Then we came back and met with the high school counselors, talked to them about these initiatives, and then after that, we met with AP high school teachers from Gruia High School and Rio High School. We had about eighteen teachers, shared all these initiatives and ideas, and we all came to the agreement that are, we will, um, starting with the twenty fourteen, fifteen freshman class, we would implement these new initiatives, and that would be that the existing AP and dual classes would be separated to be offered at different periods. Points would be awarded to the dual enrollment courses. Support services for teachers and students would be part of the program as well. Parent meetings is going to be a vital component twice a year. Celebration of AP honors at both high schools. Leadership conferences for students. AP teacher, uh, active participants as graders and readers for the, uh, college board. This redesigned program, as I mentioned, will start with the twenty fourteen, fifteen freshmen's. The upperclassmen's will be, uh, afforded the same opportunity by taking both AP and dual. We are just providing information, we are starting this program coming the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year. Thank you.
I, I wanna add something to it. Um, there's a, in July, uh, there's an AP conference in Austin. I would recommend that, uh, if possible, maybe we could send some, some teachers there, some, uh, now that it's this close, 'cause that conference is held throughout the United States, and this is in, in, uh, in Austin. Mid-July, and there's a discount if you apply by May twenty-second, so you might wanna consider just looking at it, maybe if it's beneficial, well, maybe we should attend to that.
We've all already started that process, sir.
Very good.
In fact, I just received the paperwork today from Gruia High School. We're still waiting for high school, Rio High School to turn in the paperwork. We have nine, um, going from Gruia High School, seven teachers, and two administrators, the principal and an assistant principal.
That's great.
Um, we're, we'll be presenting all the paperwork to Mr. Trigo. But, uh, yes, sir, we agreed that that would be the first initiative to carry on the, uh, support system for our teachers, and we wanna make this an annual event for them.
Very good. Also, um, AP Central, I'm sure you're familiar with that, uh, the, if you go to their website, right there, I, I went into it yesterday, and it says, uh, teachers needed, readers needed. So, they're forever asking for teachers to be readers of the different essays that students have to write for the AP program. And, um, and I'm telling you this because one of our teachers is, uh, does, goes every year, and all the expenses are, are, are paid by-
By the college board.
The college board. So, you know, this is an excellent opportunity for the teachers to look at exactly the quality and, you know, and, and whatever else that they can look at and bring back to the, to the, to our students here, and, and the benefit of, uh, you know, what, uh, reading so many other things, and it's, again, all the expenses are paid by, by the college board, so.
And that is one of the initiatives that we're gonna implement, yes.
That's great, I, I hope, I hope you encourage teachers, and some do, take up, take us up on it and decide that they wanna do. Another recommendation, you say two parent meetings, may I suggest that the first one be as early as possible, because parents need to know the, the, the rigor required in the AP classes. Quite often, and we, we're, uh, to blame ourselves as parents, but also, yeah, we had the problem at, at where I work, um, a parent says, I want my kid in an AP class, whether that kid is ready for it or not, and we, we wanna give him the benefit of the doubt, but, so, from, early on, so I'm suggesting that maybe the first two weeks of school or three weeks, whatever, it's, uh, convenient for, for the district to meet with the parents as early as possible and set out the, the criteria. Look, in order for the student to, to, uh, really appreciate and learn from the AP, you've got to, the following things are required, and, and they need to know, because the, the rigor of the AP, uh, program is really, really high.
The plan is to start this summer, sir, since we're, uh, having to, uh, separate the dual and AP, and, and we're gonna have to bring the parents in of those children that have actually registered for it, so that our master's schedule can reflect the separation of both, and educate parents on the advantages and benefits as we shared with the curriculum board committee, uh, as to what the AP program offers the individual students.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Just wanna let the board know that, that is- Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Just want to let the board know that that is something that we did discuss in depth with regards to the awareness. Before it starts, I think it's important for parents to be aware as to the rigor that the students will be faced with. And the other one is that teachers will have insight as to what it is that is in the AP exam as readers, as you mentioned. So those two suggestions, Mr. Sines, we appreciate you bringing them to the table. And like I mentioned to you before, we truly speak the same language as educators. I know that we, uh, we certainly appreciate the contribution that you make to, to this, uh, board and to our district. And, uh, it just makes me proud to say that, that's something, Ms. Garcia, that really in our committee meeting, that those two items were discussed thoroughly, and we say we have to move, and, and we have a plan of action to ensure that it does happen.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, before we go into executive, I just want to see, uh, Ms. Aldiver. I just want to, as part, as part of the board, thank you for hosting us today. I know it was a bit of a short notice, but I, we, I really appreciate it.
That's okay. He's thanking you before those. That's okay.
He wanted to make sure. He didn't want to miss that, right, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I missed those, and I just wanted to take the time to thank you. I know your job's real stressful, and, and tends to have to put up with us, uh, coming to your campus. We appreciate it.
And this is the first time we get snacks.
Very good.
And we know there was a lot of water this week, and that you had that additional stress on you, and we thank you for handling that very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aldiver. Is there anything, uh, other than reports? I don't want to... And also, I wanted to take, like she, Judy mentioned, take the time to thank our maintenance department. We've had a lot of, a lot of rain, and, uh, and we want to thank you for keeping the schools clean and their, and their kids safe. And also, the, our tech guys, you know, for setting up today, you know, and I, I don't know if y'all noticed the new screen with the names on the... As you all were presenting, the names were being flashed on the, I, I liked, it was very nice.
Yeah, we were, we were distracted a little bit.
Thank you.
Good job.
It is, it is now seven thirty-nine. We're, we'll be going into closed, closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, point oh-seven-one. It is now eight twenty-nine. We are out of executive session. Uh, do we have a motion on item A? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Do we have a motion, item B? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, do, do we have a motion on item C? Do we have a, uh, a second? A second.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we have a, do we have a motion on item D? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Same sign. Motion carries. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. The meeting is now adjourned.
Ms. Rosina, can you come forward? What time is it? Time, what time is it?
Oh, it is. It is eight thirty-one.